Good evening. I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting for October 16th to order. The first thing on the agenda is the emergency evacuation and health notification. In case of an emergency, there are two main exits out of the chambers. The first is to the left side of the stage, up the stairs, through the doorway, and down the stairway out the back side of the town hall. The second is out the back of the chambers to the exit doorway to the stairway out the front of the town hall. Men's facilities are through the back of the chambers, past the stairway, around the corner to the right. The ladies' facilities are through the back door of the chambers, straight up the stairs, and on the left. Please do not use the elevators in time of emergency. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of September 18th, 2025. Yes?
Page five, first paragraph, says we're resulting in stop at site locations 250 miles per hour. Fifty miles per hour should be.
That's a difference.
Any other changes? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
As amended.
As amended.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion on items five, 5.1, and 5.2 to move them to the front and to, since they are requests for extensions.
Okay. Any second on that? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. On the items themselves. Need a motion to continue?
Right. Are we gonna, is it gonna be, are we just gonna vote to whether we're gonna give the extensions or getting?
Is everybody here?
Motion to take those first, and then you'll make a motion to vote on the extensions.
Okay.
We have representatives.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Sam Hemmenway. I'm an engineer with Garofal and Associates, doing business out of Providence. We're here to get, requesting an extension for two projects that came in. They were, when the rules first changed, allowing this board to take action on unified development. So there were some preliminary applications. The first one, which was DRG Acres, is a resident, a minor subdivision with a street creation of, I want to say it's four lots, but it was a private road. The applicant had received preliminary approval but never filed the final because the road construction is not yet complete. Because it was a private road, he initiated the construction rather than bonding or some other mechanism. That construction activity is still occurring. So for that reason, he wants to complete the project, and then we'll report, submit, record the final lot subdivision so he can sell it off. If you want to do that one first, so I can talk about the second one. The second one is related, it's the same applicant, and the applicant, owner applicant is here. If you have questions, that is tied to the same issue. The construction activities were delayed through the permitting process. Same contractor that is expected to do the work. So effectively, the 95 Douglas, and it's mislabeled on the, on the agenda, but it was the boardroom, you maybe recall, 95 Douglas. That project similarly has kind of been pushed back so that they can occur in sequence.
Any questions?
Are we setting a timeframe for this extension, or this, what is it?
It's a one-year extension.
One-year extension?
And then they'll have the right to come back for further cause, for more extensions.
This is their first, this is their first request. Shall we, let's take the item five and 5.1 first. Do I hear a motion?
A motion to extend, get the, approve the extension for one year for item five, 5.1.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And all those opposed? The eyes have it. The second item, 5.2.
A motion to grant the request for extension, DRG Acres, item 5.2.
Is there a second?
So that is actually gonna be amend that motion to reflect that it's the boardroom.
Okay.
LLC, is it boardroom LLC?
I think the applicant is, in fact, DRG Acres, but the project was.
Okay, so 5.2 amending that, it is the boardroom project.
A second? Item, the continuance is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it.
Thank you very much.
Back to the first item on the agenda, which is an announcement. This is an update and a reminder. The scheduling of a special meeting. A special meeting of the planning board for the purpose of hearing a comprehensive permit master plan application by BOPORT LLC for property located at 60 and 82 Lime Rock Road. Assesses plat 45, lot 43 and 44B regarding a proposed 112-unit residential community. A collection at Lime Rock Acres with 25% affordable housing units. The meeting date has been scheduled for Thursday, October 23rd, 2025. The meeting location will be Smithfield High School, 90 Pleasant View Avenue. Next item on the agenda is Windsor Apartments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record. My name is Kelly Mara Salvatore. We are here on the continued preliminary plan application for Gemini Housing. At the last meeting, we, I think we addressed all of the concerns of the neighbors. We moved the dumpster, we added landscaping. I think that we sufficiently addressed all of the neighbors' concerns. We also talked about traffic, and I think you have in your packets a couple of letters between your peer reviewer and our traffic engineer. The beta's letter essentially says that no further responses are necessary except for two items. The two items are the last two comments. And the way I read it, and I believe, I, we discussed this last time, these are items that really should be handled by DOT. There's a couple of ways to handle that. One is, we will be applying for a physical alteration permit. With that physical alteration permit, the town has to send a letter to DOT saying that they are aware of the application. In that letter, they can include a request to look at the treatments that the peer reviewer suggests, which relates to the right-hand turn out of the side street, as well as the do not block markings on the road. So that's one way you can handle it. The other way is, you could add a condition that we can work in good faith. I mean, you can't say it has to be a right-hand turnout because there's no engineer that has testified that that's required or appropriate. But certainly DOT can look at that to see if that's something that's gonna be more appropriate. So with that, unless you have any questions, I think that we have, again, sufficiently addressed all of the concerns of the neighbor, I believe, of the board, of your peer reviewer. And I think that we're, we're at the point where we're ready for a decision tonight.
Members of the board? Any comment? Michael?
It's hard to find out, you know, the board has those letters?
No.
They're packets. Yes?
No?
Which letters?
The letters from my peer review on the requested information by this board at the last meeting? No? No? Oh, okay. Thank you.
That is, that is the fault of planning staff. We did receive that letter and did not send it to you.
The letter came in yesterday.
And just so you know, I called Mr. Gerton this morning to see if there was anything new, and he sent it to me, you know, when I asked it. I don't think he meant to do it. I, I don't think he meant to intentionally keep it from you.
Certainly not.
So, I, I'm not insinuating such, no. So, Mr. Chairman, if somebody else has a question right now, could I ask a few more questions?
Sure.
Thanks. Okay. So, how many, how many people, residents, are you expecting in this development? Occupants, residents?
Well, they're all one-bedroom, except for one unit is a two-bedroom. So, I mean, I don't know if you have an idea, Charisse, of what to expect, but I'm, I'm sure many of them are gonna be occupied by, just in my experience, knowing what senior housing looks like. I mean, you, you all, I'm sure, are familiar with senior housing. You're gonna have some units that might have an older couple. Some other units that might have one, one person living there.
But typically, but typically, what do you expect to see as far as residents in these?
Is there a way to estimate that, Charisse? Do you want to come up?
From past experience in, in a development this size? And a second question would be, the age range, what typically do you see? Because I, we understand this is gonna be a 55 and up restricted development. So I just need to be, it would be great to educate the board. What, what the residents, the, the demographic in those ranges of age and couples and or singles, what we could expect?
Okay. My name.
I think we should swear the witnesses. Court reporter.
I do. Charisse Miller, C-H-E-R-I-S-D-M-I-L-L-D-R. So based on my experience with 55-plus communities, it's usually at most two people in a unit for a one-bedroom. And it would be the age range 55 and over. That's based, that's my experience with that. I've managed a 40-unit, 55-plus tax credit, and it's usually one, mostly one single person, but you do get couples.
Is there, is there any studies that show how many couples and demographic breakdown on age? Like, if this is 55, you could have, you could have people working. I worked after 55 and for quite a while. So we're gonna have people that are 55 and up working, and then we're gonna have couples in there. Then we'll have quote-unquote elderly. I just need to get a better understanding of who's gonna be living in this, in this complex. And, and, and I'll tell you where I'm going with this. I don't mean to stop, slow down the wheels, wheels of progress here, but I also don't wanna miss anything prior to me deciding on how I'm gonna vote for this. Cause I'll be quite honest with you folks, I want to vote for this, but I'm not 100% sold. So that's where I'm coming from, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Moan, maybe you can explain to us what your concerns are? I mean, I, I think we've said 55-plus.
Right.
And most, I, can you say most of the time it's one person living in a unit?
I can only comment on my past experience. There's no statistical information that I can bring to the table, but based on the, the building that I had the opportunity to manage, it was at most a couple and a lot of single people in their units, and not all of them worked. Some of them had, had vouchers, and they had, some of them were on disability. There were some workers, some retirees, but it wasn't a very highly populated building with, with working families. That's just based on my experience. It's unpredictable what could be, you know, in the town of Smithfield, so. Yeah, I was dealing with North Kingstown and that.
Just from my experience, because I used to go to a lot of political things when, you know, at different facilities like that. And it, it is mostly, in my experience, women, older women who live alone. I mean, there are some couples, but I, I, I haven't experienced a lot of them. That doesn't mean there won't be any, and we can't commit to that, but.
Okay. So, the other, the other thing I'm concerned about is, are you familiar with this report? This is Smithfield Safe Streets and Roads for All Safety Action Plan. So. I, I read this highly competent traffic report from a good traffic engineer in a good company. But there was not one single mention of pedestrian activity, pedestrian traffic in this area. Two. This, this complex is located in what is referred to from this report. And we're all familiar with this area in Greenville, which used to be a village probably at least 100 years ago. A high injury network and a high-risk network. This, this redevelopment, as fine as they put it to us, and is ground zero in this network. Greenville Center is ground zero in this network, extending out to Pleasant View Avenue and all the way down to the crossings. And in fact, it includes my neighborhood. I don't know why exactly, because I haven't had a chance to look at the appendices to this report. But this report was an eye-opener for me. It really was. So that's why I'm really on the fence with this one. And I don't want to see these people who move into this complex, which, you know, someday it's gonna be me and, and God willing, my wife. Maybe not in this one, or somewhere else in town. But we don't wanna put people in here, people that are moving here, and become isolated on an island in a mess that is Greenville Center down there right now, pedestrian-wise and vehicular-traffic-wise, and what they refer to as pedestrian rolling-wise, wheelchairs. That's my concern. And again, when this initial, this application came before me, I was like, yeah, cool. Because this board has looked at these comprehensive permits in the past and has said, boy, why can't we redevelop some buildings that are going out of commission in one particular business? Like the Apex Complex down in Esmond, and now William Windsor, and there's a few other buildings in town. Boy, why can't we redevelop this one? That's why this first came before me, I was like, yeah, man, let's, let's have a look at this. So. So, those are, those are my concerns, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gerton, these letters were not sent to the board, am I correct?
Correct.
So this is the first opportunity anybody on the board is gonna have to look at these.
This letter came in yesterday around 4:30 in the afternoon.
Okay.
4:30 in the afternoon yesterday, which was in response to the applicant's traffic engineers updating their report and comments, I believe, on either Friday of last week or Tuesday of this week.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Comments one through eight, the way I interpret it, is there's no further response. They have, she has been satisfied by our engineers' responses.
Yep.
Comments nine and 10, as I said earlier, are relating to the, what you talked about, the no right-hand turn and the block marking, do not block marking on 44. That can be handled by our IDOT when they review the physical alteration permit. But when I read this, it, it appears clearly that she was satisfied with all the other comments.
Yes.
You know what, I, I totally respect that, but this is the third or fourth time we've been here.
Yep. I, I understand that, but the board hasn't had an opportunity to.
Totally agree.
To review this letter and the content. And, you know, we're, we're trying to make a valid decision that's gonna be best for the community and in fact, best for the developer.
I totally understand, Mr. Chairman. I'm just trying to weigh what's been, you know, what's happened.
What about, anything, anything else from the board?
Did, did the board request something called a SIM analysis? Is that, is that conducted? Okay. And what page in the revised traffic report do they address that?
I do. Paul Bannon, B-A-N-N-O-N, with Crossman Engineering. Yes, we provided a SIM traffic analysis. It's, it's in the appendices as part of the analysis, operational analysis. It just shows the, the queuing. It's a more detailed analysis than the synchro. It simulates the traffic and it shows the queuing. And they've confirmed, yes, it does queue past West Cottage, as we indicated. And that, you know, they feel that, as we discussed at that meeting, turning left out of West Cottage, people don't do it because they can't, because of the queuing. And that's where they said, you know, we should, the town should consider putting in a, you know, do not block the intersection type thing, and that's something that the DOT would have to consider as part of a physical alteration permit.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Yes, on the, so we're not really able, no raw data on 100%, who's gonna be in there and how many exactly? It's kind of, I'm just curious on the, for the traffic study, you had to have something to base on what potential traffic would be, right? In terms out of there, what did you base that on?
Paul Bannon again. It's based on the IT trip generation for that type of land use. There's multiple studies that indicate, you know, based on that land use and the number of units, how many trips would be generated, I believe.
Does it, all right, so it's a kind of a generic program that gives you?
The IT trip generation manual is an industry standard over, you know, 50 years of data collection that is accepted by the DOT's federal highway administration.
Do you know if it has, if it updates?
It updates, it updates regularly, and they just issued the 12th edition this year.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we, we actually were conservative in our initial study, where we estimated trips based on multifamily housing versus senior housing.
Yeah.
So we, we use higher numbers, and senior numbers are generally half multifamily, just general apart.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mr. So, this, are we having a, is this supposed to be a public hearing today?
It is. You need to open it to the public once the applicant's presentation of the updated information.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, we're here to answer any questions you have, but I'll sit and if anybody wants to speak to you.
Thank you. It is now 6:25. I'll open up the, the matter for a public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to be heard on this? Please identify yourself.
Matthew Fage, F-A-G-U-E, 47 Old Comedy Road, and I swear up before you. I do. I do. Just a couple, couple of quick comments. Going back to Mr. Bannon with the physical alteration permit, the don't block the box intersection. They tried doing a no-left turn out of Greenville Avenue. We saw how that worked out down there, and it's still a big problem. So if you're trying to restrict the traffic coming in and out of there, again, I don't know if the town will be allowed to be in that discussion. My experience, I have a lot of experience in traffic enforcement, traffic studies. I'm not an engineer. But I think if you, or if the town allows the state to put that, stop the, don't block the box there in front of that residence, I think you're gonna create a bigger break in traffic that's gonna make people more impatient and try to get around that, either by going through the library or zipping down some of the side, side streets through the neighborhood. Who's gonna enforce that? I think the Smithfield Police went out and tried to do the left-hand turn. The state put up our temporary signs, and that failed astronomically. I go to work that way five days a week. I see the traffic in the morning, I see the traffic at night. There's multiple accidents in that whole area over there. I'm not sure if Mr. Bannon can quote what the accidents are in the past year or even in the years since the school closed. Did the accidents drop? Did they remain the same? As far as the 55 and older, how permanent is that? If there's federal funds that are being used with, with this housing, which I believe there are, how long does, does it stay 55 and over only? Or does it drop after seven years, 10 years? And then they can start allowing people under 55 in there with vouchers and/or other forms of payment that is allowed from the federal government or even the state. And again, I think traffic, as much as they're saying it's, it's gonna be minimal, I think if you decide to do anything, if the, if the state puts something there, I don't think it's gonna alleviate any type of problem. We all know the traffic issue is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna be heard on this particular subject? No takers, I will close the public hearing at 6:28.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have the opportunity to go through this memo. Not knowing what it says, and I understand other people's opinion, but I'd like to read it for myself and come up with my own conclusion.
Okay. Any other board members? Do I hear a motion of any type?
So, before you make, if you're gonna continue this, if that's your intent, let's just make sure in the time period for one, a decision on the clock, but also, you are holding a meeting next week. I know it's gonna be a packed house, but if you may only need 15 minutes to review this. this, 15 minutes at the meeting to have gone through everything and make a decision on this next week, because I know there are some timelines that the applicant is butting against for funding. So I just want to, I'm trying to balance what the board needs to do with also some of the concerns that the applicant had about when the timeframes are for funding. If November's okay, no big deal, but I'd like to get a little input from the applicant on that. And everyone else, in terms of maybe spending 15, 20 minutes before the Lime Rock application next week, you could potentially have it heard then. We don't need to give notice to anyone because we'd have to put it on the agenda. That's what we're going to do, right? I just, what?
No, whenever you.
Yeah, I just think we just have to have an agenda written. We don't need, it doesn't have to be in the paper. So I think if we have it listed as an agenda, write them.
So I just talked to my client, and we would prefer next week because the deadline for the tax credit applications are going to be due like early December, we think, or late November. So they have to get started on that. They have to know if they have an approval.
Is there any preference with the board next week?
You can do it next week before.
That's cool.
I'm waiting for a motion to continue this to the next board meeting, special board meeting of October 23rd.
Some votes.
Second.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Just if I may inquire, it will just be for decision.
Correct.
We won't need all of our experts here.
It'll be for a decision.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll just remind anybody in the public that is here for this one, this is your notice that it's continued to the next meeting next week, October 23rd, at the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 5.3, Amelia's Way, 250 Old County Road, public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
Since they're not here yet. Did we receive, and did the applicant receive, and did we receive a copy of the physical alteration permit approval from the D O T for Amelia's Way? Because I got one.
I have one slip in here that has, had a couple of paper clips on it, but there was nothing attached to it. It kind of inferred that there might be a, yeah, there was no ammo attached.
Nothing attached to it. Right.
Yeah, that's it.
I have no knowledge that we've received anything other than that particular form.
So we saw Joe Casali here, who is the engineer for that project, but we don't see him out in the hallway right now, but.
Do you want to?
Billy, we're ready for you.
Yes, Amelia's Way is. Can you hear this in the hallway?
Yes.
Good evening, Jim. And just for the record, Joe Casali, registered professional engineer, offices at 300 Post Road in Warwick. Mr. Chairman, Attorney Tim Keane could not be with us tonight. I'm just here to give you our latest update. We do not yet have our physical alteration permit from D O T. We did get correspondence from them today, specifically from Chris Walaznick, that we're hoping to get the chief engineer approval today to issue the acceptance letter for this P A P. So we expect it in the forthcoming days, respectfully requesting a continuance to the next scheduled meeting. I don't know if that would be next week on the 23rd or the following month.
That'll be the following month. Should be November 20th.
November 20th.
And we need an agreement to, from the applicant to extend the deadline to make a decision.
We do agree.
All right, with that said, a motion to grant the continuance for Emily's Way, 260 Old County Road, for the November 20th meeting.
Thank you.
With an, in that motion, with the extension of the deadline?
With the extension of the deadline, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
And again, for all those in attendance, for this matter, this is your notice of the continuance for the next date for this matter. You do not get a separate notice in the mail.
Item number six, 55 Stillwater, pre-application review.
My name is Ashley Tyce, registered professional engineer with Hillview Environmental LLC.
This is a pre-application, so we don't need sworn testimony on this?
Nope.
So you don't need to be sworn in? There's no decision being made tonight, just comments or ideas to help the applicant with respect to this project.
So the purpose of this application is to create a minor development involving parcels 42-125A and 23-59, while also improving the fire and utility access to parcel 23-48D. We intend to extend Hill Street as a new private road onto parcel 42-125A, and the private road will be approximately 500 feet long and 20 feet wide, and will be designed to support the weight of the firefighting equipment as required by the town fire department. The private road will provide sufficient frontage to bring parcel 42-125A into zoning compliance for construction of a new single-family dwelling, and it will also provide sufficient frontage to allow the subdivision of parcel 23-59 into two conforming parcels for the construction of a new single-family dwelling on each of those parcels. The private road construction process will also include the installation of connections to municipal water and sewer and underground electric and telecommunications services. And in addition, the fire service line at the hydrant at the top of Hill Street will be extended with a new six-inch water service line, following the new private road to a new hydrant serving all four properties. Parcel 23-48D is an existing non-conforming lot for a single-family dwelling and will only be modified to connect it to municipal water service. This parcel will also benefit from the fire hydrant service extension and private road construction for fire access compliance, but those improvements will not modify the parcel itself. The existing lot has electricity and sewer system on site from the prior house construction. So in summary, our, what we are proposing is the completion of the private road construction, utility installation, and minor subdivision of parcel 23-59, and the minor development will consist of three conforming parcels with frontage on what we're tentatively naming Forest View Terrace, with installed municipal water, municipal sewer, electricity, fire hydrant service, and telecommunications service, and one existing non-conforming parcel with frontage on Stillwater Road with new municipal water service, fire hydrant service, and fire equipment access through Forest View Terrace. Electricity and sewer service are existing.
Can you identify what the non-conformances for the lot you're proposing?
We are not, we are not proposing any additional non-conformances. The existing non-conformance of parcel 23-48D is that there is not the required street frontage on Stillwater.
Yes.
Question. Is this the lot that had a fire?
Yes, it is.
It is? Okay. So where the two granite bar beds are, is that, that's going to be used as the driveway going up there?
That is the existing driveway and will be continued to be used as a driveway for that parcel. However, Hill Street, we're proposing to extend it as a private road to be used as a driveway to the other. Currently, two parcels, proposing one additional parcel that meets the standards of your fire department with a 20-foot width road.
How are you going to address the water issue that comes off that hill?
Well, I am a civil and environmental engineer with a specialty in water, natural water resources, so.
Because there's an issue there on that hill. In fact, one resident has added stones going all the way down to the street, and then there's a huge problem with it going across the road to the house across the road. And now I noticed just in the last week, another house on the road has had excavation equipment in there, and you can see the water coming out of the ledge constantly.
So at this point in the process for meeting here today, we're at a pre-application meeting, and so I haven't designed the stormwater management system, but I intend to exceed the requirements of the town and state and improve existing conditions over what's there today, even with these new homes being built.
I just want to make sure you realize there's a huge issue there with the water.
We will meet and exceed all requirements. All hills have their problems, and especially being so close to the Georgetown Pond, there's not a lot, like it needs to be treated prior to ending up there.
Your permission?
Yes.
Nice plans, by the way. I noticed on page three of seven that, let's see, the subject parcels due for, number, under general information, number six, do fall within the watershed of the Wenoska-Tucket River and its tributary Whipple Brook, which is a TMDL for fecal coliform and dissolved metals. Then below that on number 10, and this kind of leads into what Catherine was speaking, her concerns of, on number 10, the subject parcels are wooded, with the exception of the cleared area where the former residence was. Then you follow up with that on page six of seven. On number four on the general information, the low impact of the concept of minimizing clearing and grading, especially in areas susceptible to erosion, will be used to minimize impacts to the natural topography. Clearing and grading will be limited to what is necessary to construct the private road, proposed utilities, and eventually in the immediate vicinity of proposed residence, proposed utilities will be placed close to the proposed private road in order to minimize excavation. So where I'm getting at, Mr. Chairman, is that we've seen this promise before, and I congratulate you on putting that in there. We hope that that is the way you follow your design.
As I said, I am first and foremost a natural water resources engineer, and with my professional engineering license in environmental and civil engineering, and that is our intention. We would, the clearing for where the home once stood on, I'm going to get the parcel number wrong, parcel 23-48D, there's no additional clearing proposed. The existing driveway for that home, there's no additional clearing proposed. The extension of the Hill Street into a private road is proposed where there is already an existing but poorly maintained driveway, and the only reasons that we would be clearing additional space is for to meet the 20-foot width requirements of your fire department as well as to install the utilities as required. However, we will be replanting that. And as, as possible, as you noted, this is a extreme slope with a lot of ledge, but where possible, we would like to have all of our stormwater management above ground in, with green infrastructure. So that means swales that will require some space, so we may have to cut down some bushes in order to put a grass swale in that meets the requirements of the Rhode Island Stormwater Design Manual. But we're only doing this as required, and for the new homes that will eventually be built, we are not proposing to have lawns or to clear more than really what is required for the structure itself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other questions at this point? Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, even though it's a pre-app and there isn't a public hearing, because there is a public comment under our ordinance, you can ask if the public has any comments specifically? They should, you can also limit these comments to a couple of minutes at most?
At this point, or at the end of the meeting?
At this time, so the applicant can hear any, any public thoughts?
If there are any residents present who wish to comment on this particular project, this is your opportunity to come forward and put your comments on the record. Seeing no one come forward, thank you very much for being here tonight. The next item on the agenda is item number six, 55 Stillwater, pre-application. I'm sorry, that's the one we just did. Residents at 295, master plan review. This is open for a public hearing.
I'm a little frog in my throat, so bear with me. Good evening, Joel Rocha, attorney for the applicant. This project has been before the board several times. We were here on a pre-application this summer. We got some good feedback, proceeded forward, we submitted.
We submitted for master plan in August. Were certified complete. All items were there. We appeared before a TRC in September. The ad was a little blurry. So the town advises we were not going, the public hearing was not going to happen last month. We still appeared to get some feedback from this board, which was helpful as well. And we'll address the comments from the September meeting from the board during our presentation. As the board is aware, this property is Assessors Platte 48, Lot 5, approximately 3.62 acres. It's located in the Economic Growth Overlay District, which many of the board members recall when that came into existence, as do I. In the initial pre-app, there was consensus, and we submit that this is a type of project that is called out for in the Economic Growth Overlay District, which allows for percentages of certain uses, residential, commercial, and so on and so forth. This is a comprehensive permit project, so we are above the density that is called for in the Economic Growth Overlay District. And we are above the minimum density bonus allowed in the statute, in the Comprehensive Permit Statute. There are, to correct the record, there are 22 units, 25% of the project as affordable. We received a couple hours ago, about 3 o'clock, a 14-page staff report, which is a bit daunting, given this project has been around since August. We will address some of the statements and the conclusions in that report, as I don't believe they're consistent with the law or the overlay district itself. So we'll go through that. I think, I want to point out a couple issues out of the gate, and then we'll talk about the reasons for continuance and the potential conditions later on after our presentation. But I do want to bring up the statements about consistency with the comprehensive plan. We did submit to the board, and I hope you all got a copy, a proposed findings of fact for this project. Because the law changed in July with respect to the standards, we wanted to make sure you had those in front of you tonight for this application. And we'll go through those standards in case you haven't had a chance to recognize, to go through them. Comprehensive plan consistency is no longer a finding for a comprehensive permit. I will say, I disagree with your planner that it's not consistent. The Economic Growth Overlay District calls for a mix of residential and commercial. So there are a lot of statements in the staff report how residential might not be appropriate here and things like that. I think this is exactly the project that has been approved in the Economic Growth Overlay District, and that should be approved. So we do take issue with those statements. Another issue I want to address again out of the gate is there's a statement about a maximum setback. I can speak on this one, because we did not seek relief from maximum setback, because a town cannot require a maximum setback. I litigated, it was a project Mr. Casali's office was on as well in North Smithfield, where the town required us to get a minimum, to get minimum setback relief by way of a variance. And they denied that application. We went to court, and the court, based on black letter law, said, "You can only do what's in the town, can only do what's in the Zoning Enabling Act." And that only talks about minimum setbacks. And to the point that the court actually found there was no justification for that requirement and awarded my client $45,000 in fees. So there is no maximum setback requirement. There's a statement in the staff report that the, that decision is persuasive, not binding. For all of you who are non-lawyers, the only place you can go for review is Superior Court. There is no right beyond that for review. So those land use cases are not just persuasive. So we do not need relief from the maximum setback. We will not be seeking that. We've made that clear in all of our submissions to date, so I'm surprised to see it here. The last issue before I turn it over to our presentation is there is significant time spent in your staff report for the findings of fact under 452360. That is the regular Land Development and Subdivision Act findings. Those do not apply to this project. So we'll go through later the standards that actually apply that are in 4553, which is the Comprehensive Permit Statute, which I'm sure you've seen enough comprehensive permits. I know you're intimately familiar with those. But there have been some changes since July, so it may be the first time you're seeing those. In any event, I will turn it over to our project engineer to get into the details of our project, and then I will circle back to talk about some of the other items in the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the boards. Just for the record, my name's Joe Casali. I'm a registered professional engineer. Offices at 300 Post Road in Warwick. If I may, Mr. Chairman, quick PowerPoint presentation. I know that we went through it just a month ago for a pre-app. I'd like to quickly run through it again. We have built upon it based on some of the comments that we received from this board a month ago. So residences at 295, again, just where we are in terms of the community. Route 295, 116 George Washington Highway, right, Harris Road, Rocky Hill Road. And that's the subject piece, specifically, Mr. Chairman, Assessors Platte 48, Lot 5, known as 34 Rocky Hill Road. It's actually a small piece, about 3.59 acres. You can see what is around us in terms of easy dump trailers, little learners, the self-storage, Tire Pros, CN Wood, FGX International. I think that's one of the major draws to this project, is it's sort of out of the way and not in an urbanized, an urbanized area. In terms of the airport, because whenever we're in the northern point of town, you know we need to be cognizant of any airport hazard areas. We are completely outside of any of the runway protection zones, approached zones, transitional zones, and horizontal zones. Freshwater wetlands, these are real. They have been delineated by Scott Rabidoo, Natural Resource Services. You can see that because it's so small and the location that we're in the Western Point in Rhode Island, we only have a 25-foot buffer zone. But we do have the 20-foot primary structure setback, but also the 100-foot DEM jurisdictional area, meaning all of the program will of course be out of the wetland edge, the buffer and the structure setback. But we will need, and part of the approval process will constitute us filing for and receiving a wetlands permit from the Department of Environmental Management. As Attorney Rocha said, as you all know, this is in the planned corporate zoning district. The Economic Growth Overlay, the EGO district, it overlays this, which some of the original architects are still in this room, which requires mixed use in terms of residential and commercial. It does have a 25-foot rear yard setback. I show that for context. We're not going to be asking for any relief from that, from that rear yard setback. So let's talk about density calculations. Because we're in the EGO zone, when we look at the area suitable for development, you need to have 35% of the land that would be for mixed use. And then you'd want the remaining 65% to be for the residential use. We are going to generally comport with that. A couple of the adjustments you will see that you saw last month, we're going to ask for changes in that, making the red area about 9% larger and taking from the, from the commercial area. So when you look at that 35, or that 65%, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, of the 3.59 acres, you're left with about 101,000 square feet. So this district allows, thank you, allows 20 units per acre. So the baseline density in terms of an EGO district with this amount of land area would be 46 units. Now on top of that, as you know, Mr. Chairman, the state will allow what they call a minimum density bonus in terms of the percent affordable. This project is going to do the minimum. It's 25% affordable. So it's going to be five units per acre or another 11 units. So the total yield on this property with the 46 from the EGO district and the 11 from a comprehensive bonus at a minimum yields 57 units. What we're asking for is more than that. We're asking for 86 units. 22 of them or 25% of them will be low to moderate income. So our first adjustment that we are respectfully requesting would be an adjustment for the amount of units for 29 additional units, again, from the 57 allowed to the 86 that we're proposing. So how is all of those units going to fit on a piece? We're going to do it with a multi-structured building. What you see before you is a four-story, multifamily residential structure. It'll house all 86 units. That footplate that you see is about 19,500, call it 20,000 square feet, when you have four of those replicating on top of each other in terms of the 20 some odd units on each floor. I do have Matt Clements with me tonight. Matt is an architect that, as, from Ed Wojcicki's office, that has worked on the project. I will bring him in later. I know Mr. Calcavecchio may have some questions on the permanence of materials. We've tried to build upon that since we saw you last, and I think we've got some, some good, some good feedback to go back and forth and banter. So you can see what this is going to look like, quintessential New England to fit in the natural character of here in Smithfield, Rhode Island, massing diagrams. So another programmatic element, Mr. Chairman, that I think is a real draw to the project, not only its location, but in terms of its units. These are mostly one-bedroom units. There's 72 one-bedroom units and 14 two-bedroom units for the total of 86 units. We understand that this will cut down on the amount of school-aged children, which the town is, is looking for some support in different applications. The one-bedroom units, there's four different types. You can see how they lay out in terms of different, type A to type D. Obviously, all of the affordable housing will be spread. It needs to be, by law, spread equally amongst all the type units as well as the number of bedroom units. So you will see, for every four type C units, you will see one affordable. And the same thing happens for the, for the two-bedroom, for the two-bedroom units. So that's a visual we showed last month. That's if you're, say, leaving town 295 north. What you will see from, at this time of year with the, with the type of foliage, we acknowledge that this building will be seen from 295. But we do believe that its massing will be in natural character. What is the commercial portion of this project? It's going to be a flex space unit. So we have eight of them there. These are about 22 by 45. They totaled slightly more than 8,000 square footage and gross floor area. That's a typical flex unit space, which I think that you will see with the overhead door, the man doors, typical gable-type structure. And then in terms for adjustment, one, the first one was for the density, but the second one is going to be in terms of the 35% of the commercial area, Mr. Chairman, and then the 65% of residential. In terms of the commercial area, what we're asking for is to have about 40,000 square feet or 25.8%. Requesting relief of 9.2%. And then, of course, conversely, with the residential land, the 65% max, we're asking that to be increased to 74.2%. Or again, that relief is about 9.8%. So we're making the residential portion a little bit larger and the commercial portion a little bit smaller. So how is all of this going to work out and work out together? We're going to have one primary entrance off of Rocky Hill Road through staff comments. This is a new element. I don't believe that you saw last month that that's going to be the dedicated throughway for the commercial traffic use to come in and out of the, to separate the residential and the commercial uses a little bit. In terms of parking, we still have more than required, but not as much as we had last time. We heard the board loud and clear in terms of, can you reduce a little bit of the impervious area and impervious lock coverage? So while the requirement is for 98 spaces, we are proposing 112 total spaces. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. The required is 105 spaces. We're proposing 112. So seven more spaces per code, which we hope you'll see that's a reduction from what we had the last time, which was in excess of code. Drainage, pretty straightforward, because this is part of an industrial park long designed ago. Different infiltration techniques, detention techniques will be used. And then ultimately, we are going to discharge the way the rest of this industrial park does into existing stormwater basin. That's within the, within the state highway system. So we'll be seeking permits from Department of Transportation. Utilities, 12-inch water main right in Rocky Hill Road. We'll be extending that main to have domestic and fire protection, both inside of the building and also with the hydrants. We'll bring domestic service into the commercial uses. In terms of sewer, we're going to need a couple of small pump stations to take that sewer service down Rocky Hill Road and then ultimately tying into a Bay Commission gravity line that's within Harris Road. Landscaping, we've hired Diane Soul, local landscape architect, to provide a landscape plan that comports with not only town standards. We understand the EGO district has additional standards and more robust standards. One of the other elements we want to point out, though, is the buffer plantings along the roadway, different canopy trees within the interior parking, additional wetland plants. That entire area for the continuous sidewalk so that we can walk in a 360-degree circumference around the building. And then also, we've outlined from last time, additional exterior communal spaces, elements like a putting green or areas to just sit and relax. We did stop short of the more active recreational areas like playgrounds. And you'll see most of that is passive, with exception to the putting greens. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, in terms of permitting, pre-application in April of '25. Tonight is only our optional master plan. If we are successful, we still have a bunch of filings with state agencies, including DEM, Smithfield Water, Fire, Bay Commission, Town Engineer for a plethora of elements, ultimately coming back for preliminary. And then all of these permits will be required at the final plan via the administrative officer. I do have with me both our traffic engineer, Paul Bannon. I do have architect Matt Clements here with us if there are certain questions that we have of him. And of course, we have Al Vizirelli, the applicant here as well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Casali, I had a quick question about the permitting process, because you said the drainage, because it's going to the state highway, has to go to DOT?
Yes, it does.
And so DEM and DOT have to review the drainage?
That's correct, yes, as well as the town engineer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
The increase in the percentage on the residential side, what is that? What specifically is that gaining for you? What's changing? What's different? Is it just open space? Are you getting more parking out of it? What's the need for that increase?
Yeah, it just allows us to keep our residential program, the parking, the roadways in, so forth and so on, within the residential zone.
Okay, so it just keeps it all in that?
It does. We didn't micro-calculate this and take out the access road, which is really shared for both of them. We just kept the entire building and parking framed in red. John, it's that residential piece and then that entire purple area that just highlights the eight flex units.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
The green space that was going to be added. Can you show me on the map where you put that? Because right in here, it looks like it's all drainage.
Yes, no, so if I may, Catherine, so one is going to be that yellow line that just came up. That's going to be the continuous sidewalk wrapped around the building. So we'll be able, along all the parking areas, if somebody wanted to walk around the building, they'd be able to do that. And the communal space will be in those areas. You have a couple of areas that we're able to carve out. This is a little tough because of the grading, just to have areas where people can rest and people can sit. And that's what Diane thought that some of this would look like. I know in the past projects we've done with her to have different types of seating areas under some of the existing trees, some of these seating in shaded areas, and then we thought, like Village at Waterman Lake, maybe something a little more active, like a putting area.
I'm just having trouble seeing how you're going to fit that in with what you have for a drawing here.
Well, I think all the drainage will be down in this lower area. That's going to be the detention basin, and that's going to be the UIC. So I think that it will fit, just looking at the drainage, if I may. Yeah, so the drainage is going to be all down here, those communal areas. One will be right there, right in that area, and then up in top. Yeah, so I believe if you look closely at Diane's plan, she has our most current grading plan. She has that large UIC field. These are the two flat-end sections that come in, and then all of the drainage ultimately makes its way. That's an easement that goes into existing basin that outflows into the state system.
Just some comments and...
Yeah, does that make sense? Did we answer your question? I want to make sure that...
Yes, but I think, I'm a visual person. If I could actually see it drawn out, it would be helpful.
Fair. But we do commit there will be passive and active recreation areas absolutely within the development. Sorry, Richard.
And this is for the team, and I apologize, but I think this is the first time, last month was the first time I saw this, and I hadn't seen it before. I mean, most meetings, I think, April, I took time off, but anyway. And maybe these comments, I apologize, coming a little late. When we were all doing the growth overlay plan or ideas, it was this village concept in that the retail component was going to be supported by the residential, and the residential was going to be supporting the retail. And it was more, like we said, a village type of community, which would allow different types of residential, different types of commercial to kind of work together. And granted, we were talking about a large scale, right at the corner there, and not something small like this. But the idea was, is that, again, the putting in residential where, really not zone for residential, was going to work with the commercial of the area, and that it was going to be a play between the two, and that would kind of justify putting some of the residential. This doesn't seem like that, to be perfect. This seems like it's a hotel, you know, that it landed amongst commercial, light commercial spaces, and it's there as a commodity for, you know, very short term. There's no really sense of community. There's no interaction with the retail, you know, unless they happen to be, you know, in that business. So it doesn't, you know, so what I did last week is basically ask you all to go back and take a look at the growth overlay, you know, in the zoning ordinance, and not just material-wise, but try to address what the purpose was and what the intent is of that effort that we did so long ago. So again, just my comments, and perhaps you all can kind of address my concerns.
Just a couple of points on that. So I think to your point, this is a three-point-two-six acre parcel. So we're constrained by that, and where the only relief we're seeking from that district is the percentage. And again, as Joe mentioned, we're just making two boxes. I'm sure we could find compliance with those percentages, but just for ease of not giving everybody a headache on those. So that's the, in the density under the comprehensive permit, but we're not talking about, you know, the Smithfield Pete site that has all, that you can fit in all of these different uses, and it's so, it's ninety acres and it's so massive. I think you have to think about the context of all these pieces that were zoned in this. So it becomes difficult on a parcel analysis when you're dealing with a three-point-two-six acre parcel, and what that fits into the puzzle piece. I will say that, again, there's no other relief required. I get that the intent was, we were sort of looking at, and I remember back then when this came into place, we were sort of looking at that parcel and a couple other big ones, and really didn't consider that. But I don't know that, what that means in the scheme of the comprehensive permit. I think we tried to come up with, can we fit a commercial use on here as well to sort of be consistent with what the EGO district wants, but at the end of the day, you know, provide an affordable housing project under a different statutory scheme. So understood your comments on that, but I think it's hard to apply that to such a small site, but, Al.
With regards to the flex space, I think there's a misconception on what it actually could be. I think everybody's thinking, you know, rental units for tradesmen. If you drive around town, we currently have, I wouldn't call it flex space per se, but we have garages right on Cedar Swamp Road. There's a gym in there. There's a thrift shop in there. You know, they just did a new development off of Route Seven. John Delora did one. There's a gym in there. There's nothing to say that a gym couldn't take one of these spaces, which would be used by the residents. There's nothing to say that a yoga studio, you know, there are many uses for flex space, so it still could be considered retail. So we're not denying anybody the option to do that, but we're also giving ourselves the option, if we can't rent it out for that, we have an option for something else. So, you know, when it comes to those units, I'm open to whatever works with the residents as well. And like Joel said, I mean, we're constrained by the fact that sixty-five percent is residential, so we only have those eight units, but, you know, again, a gym could be perfect there. A yoga studio, there's plenty of things that could go there besides tradesmen, and, you know, I think that's where we're a little stuck on maybe the garage concept.
I just have a little difficulty, you know, that, really, who is going to want to live here, okay? I mean, I'm going to want to have to live next to a highway and a bunch of light industrial buildings, like right in the middle of it. It's like, I don't, I don't, so it's, so what we're doing is we're taking this, you know, this component that we're all trying to hit, and we're saying, okay, here's a good spot for it. It seems forced, and it seems, it seems inappropriate for, what we're trying to do is include people with lower incomes or middle income with others. We're basically saying, okay, here's a, here's a piece of property right next to the highway, right amongst all of these light industrial, you know, storage units, and here's a place for you to go. It just seems inappropriate.
I don't think this is an uncommon, uncommon concept. I mean, if you've ever been to Indiana, Michigan, you see this all over the place. They're on the highway all the way up and down the roads. I mean, we, I think by right, a hotel is actually allowed here. So you said it looks like a hotel, but I think by right, a hotel is allowed here.
A hotel might be more appropriate.
I would tend to disagree with you, only in the sense that there's a waiting list of well over five thousand people who are looking for housing. So even if it was their rentals, if it was temporary, if it's for a year for somebody to live there until they can find a house that fits them, that's not such a bad thing.
I, and I, this is sixty-five percent residential, that's what we're talking about. So whether this is a comprehensive permit or not, if we develop this under the EGO district and we did forty-six units, right, it's more than forty-six units, because then your inclusionary zoning applies. So there's still, the EGO district calls for a residential percentage. So to say that this residential here is not appropriate, I think goes against your ordinance in the first place, but we're not talking really in the context about an ordinance. And I do take issue with, because there's an affordable middle-income component, it may not be appropriate here. I think you've already, the town's made a decision that residential is appropriate here.
I don't think the town's made that decision.
Well, that's what's important.
But it was the, it was the fact that these properties were, well, the properties we were talking about was planned corporate, and how do you, planned, yeah, planned corporate district, and how do you, how do we get residential amongst that type of zoning? So it was an effort to get residential into that district. This is light.
Right, but we're not, we're not here asking for you to allow residential as a use variance. Residential is allowed at this site. So I just want to be clear that resident, we're not here saying, oh, this is, this is an industrial area where residential isn't allowed. There are areas like that. This is not one of them. Oh, Al, go ahead.
My name, I'm sorry. My name is Alfa Costantino. Right, I reside at sixteen Toner Pool Trail, Smithfield, and I'm the owner of the property. So it just recently, within, two hours ago, I received the staff report, two hours ago, and I read it. I wish I had a few days to read it, but I did read it, and I've listened to everything up until now, and I want to go back in time. So the property's own highway commercial, that's the underlying zone. It's not zone planned corporate, it's not zone light industry, it's zone highway commercial. And then there's the EGO district, nine-point-four. I know it like I know my name, because I was on the committee and the commission, we put it together. It was a long time ago. And it extends, basically, at the beginning of George Washington Highway, all the way up to the Lincoln Line. And I haven't looked at the comp plan in the last, in fact, I haven't been coming to meetings for a while, but I haven't looked at the comp plan recently. But what I'm hearing and seeing in the staff report is that it's not consistent with the comp plan. That's what it says in here. Now, nine-point-four was started, the committee was put together, Mike Phillips did all the meetings, we had expert witnesses, right, you were there. And it was for the future of Smithfield, Rhode Island. And I've been here since nineteen fifty-four, but I always say, somebody that came to this town a second ago has the same rights that I do. So when I say by nineteen fifty-four, I watched town grow. And if it's not consistent with the comp plan, you need to take nine-point-four and put the scissors to it and get it out of the town of Smithfield. Because I'm going to just read parts of nine-point-four just to see what we have here. The EGO Economic Growth Overlay District. Let's talk strictly residential, that you may think that residential is inconsistent with the area, when the area is actually zoned with the EGO district. And this is what you can do in nine-point-four for residential. Dwelling units, two-family. Dwelling units, multifamily permitted, family daycare permitted, dwelling, single-family attached permitted, customary home occupation permitted, congregant housing permitted, lack care facilities, one hundred and twenty beds, nursing homes, less than one hundred and twenty beds. Two household detached structures, duplexes, eight units per acre. Multi-household dwelling structures, twenty units per acre. Residential dwellings, care-assisted living, thirty-two units per acre. It was designed from day one to have residential in the EGO district, which goes the entire length of George Washington Highway to the Lincoln Line. So, and it's a matter of right. As our attorney said, we're not here asking to put residential, it's a matter of right. And, just a second, please. Says right here, it says, together with the project advantage statutory housing, it is in eyes with both the comprehensive plans future land use map. And I just explained what the EGO is, and it's, and I have, we have, as a matter of right, so...
But what it also says, Al, is it says a mixture. It says a mixture.
I'm sorry?
It says a mixture. If you, if you look, and I don't mean to, but also read, also read nine-four-point-one and nine-four-point-two, it talks about a mixture, not just, not just residential, but a mixture where...
I understand that clearly. And the mixture from day one, when it was brought up, was thrown out there thirty-five percent, or sixty-five percent. And we discussed a lot at the time that the market will bear what percentage works and so forth, but we are doing a mix for here. So, and I'm not...
No, no, I'm trying to have a dialogue, just having a dialogue, trying to just...
It says here that, it says here that the site is designated white industry. It's not, it's zone highway commercial, and it's on highway... Now, when you get further down the road, it says the project isn't consistent with the future land use map. Well, if the future land use map is to get rid of 9.4, I haven't heard, in other words, going back to 9.4, it was really started because of Smithfield's property, because of that 100 acres of 70116. And we knew from day one that it would take 20 or 30 years for this to sink in. And now it's been, what, 10 or 12 years? It was a long-term plan, so I can't see where the long-term plan is going to be ripped up by the comp plan. And then, talks about bringing a sidewalk out towards Harris Road, towards 116. I've spent a lot of time on 116. When I wasn't at home, that was my second home. And to back up, this project has been studied in detail in Merit off a project in North Smithfield, where everybody has a car. And that project in North Smithfield doesn't have really any place to go, except to go home where you live in a development like this, and to go somewhere else. So if you were going to put a sidewalk or walkways to get to 116, what are you walking to? There's Casey, there's an asphalt paving and concrete company, if you want to go buy a plow from the Janet truck, there's really nothing there to walk to. However, when you, it says here, I'm almost done, but, that this wouldn't be compatible with what the people want that live there. Well, I want to tell you what the people want that are going to move there. They want accessibility to get to Providence, drive up the road, run down 146. They want the accessibility to get on 295 and go north and south. And speaking of 295, what Albert mentioned, I drive up and down 295 to South Kingston three or four times a week, and I see developers along the car of 295. So you've got Lincoln Mall, you've got Greenville, you've got restaurants, you've got everything that people would want. And it talks, it talks in here about you really want to bring them to where there's more residential. In other words, it talks in this report as though you want to bring them more to where there's more residential existing, you know, near a school. There's a reason why there's so many one-bedroom apartments in this. There's not going to be yellow buses there. So I'd like to see this get back on track. I wish I had this a week ago to discuss it with our team, you know, just to see the concerns, but as explained here originally, I, that property's been sitting there for a long time, and now we want to do a mixed use of residential and non-residential. And that's what, and when you look at 9.4, you look at what's available for non-residential, there's quite a bit. It is quite a bit with highway commercial. So we're doing exactly what 9.4 asked for, and it was stated by this, by a member of this board at a previous meeting, we've been waiting for this for a long time. That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unless there are any questions, I'm going to call up our traffic engineer to give an overview. Paul?
For the record, Paul Bannon, B A N N O N, with Crossman Engineering. We retained, conducted preliminary traffic safety and trip generation study for this project. As part of that effort, we reviewed the site plans of the proposed design prepared by Joe Casale to review the access and egress to the property. We conducted numerous site visits at various times of the day, days of the week, to observe traffic conditions. We inventoried the project area for land uses, roadway conditions, horizontal, vertical geometry. We completed a traffic count specifically for this project at the 116 intersections with Rocky Hill and Harris. We also reviewed previous data for those intersections. I had worked on the FGX expansion back in 2012, so I'm very familiar with the area. I designed and approved the traffic signal that was installed for that expansion. We reviewed accident information from the Smithfield Police Department to determine if there are any safety concerns in the project area. And then we developed a trip generation for the mixed-use project using the IT Trip Generation Manual, standard industry manual. And then we assessed the safety and operations of the proposed access to the property. Briefly going over the project area, the crosshole is located, as discussed, along the westerly terminus of Rocky Hill Road, which is roughly, you know, 1,300 feet long on a 3.5 acre property. It's been partially cleared as it was previously used as part of the self-storage. Land use in the area, it's a mixture of commercial, industrial, and there's a few residential homes within that, that small neighborhood serviced by those two roadways. Route 116 is classified as an urban principal arterial, running north-south between Farnham and Mendon Road. It's a property in this project area, 44 feet wide, single 12-foot travel and 10-foot shoulder in each direction. It's signalized at Rocky Hill Road. It services roughly 12,000 vehicles per day. That's during the AM peak, roughly 1,200, and during the PM peak, 1,600. That's consistent with and less during particular hours than what was serviced on that section of road back in 2012. Rocky Hill Road and Harris are local neighborhood streets that service the properties along them. Harris Road is roughly 750 feet. They vary in width from 18 to 26 feet. They're undelineated, no curving or sidewalks along their length. During the morning peak, Harris serves roughly 145 vehicles per hour and 128 in the PM. A lot of that's associated with the daycare facility right at the inner, just west of the intersection with 116. Rocky Hill Road services lower volumes of 49 vehicles per hour in the AM and 65 in the PM to the traffic signal. Reviewing the safety, we reviewed the horizontal, vertical geometry to determine if our access point on Rocky Hill Road would provide safe access. It's right at the end of the cul-de-sac area, so site distance to the east was reviewed, and it's over 300 feet, which is sufficient for the low speeds that are serviced along there. We did find one location that did have insufficient site distances, insufficient, and that was located at the stop-controlled intersection of Harris with Rocky Hill Road. There's, Rocky Hill Road is, because of the nature of it, partially developed, and with some property owners and then, you know, open land, the town hasn't maintained the roadside vegetation, so a lot of the vegetation is grown right into the pavement in roadway, narrowing the roadway and restricting sightlines. So in our report, we've recommended that maintenance be done to provide that, that proper sightline distance. Okay, then we've reviewed what volume of traffic will be generated by this type of land use, using the IT Trip Generation Manual for the 86 residential units and the eight contractor or trade units. Based upon the use of the IT manual, we would estimate that during the morning peak hour, we would generate 45 vehicle trips. There'll be 17 entering and 26 exiting. And during the PM peak, 49 vehicle trips with 26 entering and 23 exiting. Assigning those vehicles to the local streets, we would assume that they would be split north to south. If you're going north, you're using Rocky Hill, you're going south, turning right, you would use Harris app. Splitting that traffic, that amount of traffic to those intersections, we feel that those intersections would operate efficiently with the current volumes that they do service in addition to what is being proposed. So our conclusion is adequate, and safe access can be provided to this with, along with the recommendations that we've made in our study. I'll be able to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon.
He's not going to let me.
Mr. Bannon, for the, for the board, could you briefly explain what a peak period is in the analysis that you folks do for traffic? I think it's some kind of 15-minute window or something?
No, when we, when we look at the impacts of projects, we define what we would consider the peak period, the peak one hour during the morning and afternoon, and depending on the type of land use, if it's more a commercial use, and Saturday would be that peak combination of site-generated traffic with the roadway peak. So we look at that worst-case one-hour condition during the morning and the afternoon. And so based on the traffic counts that we look, we, you know, depending on the scale of the project, we'll obtain automatic traffic report accounts on the main roadways to determine when those peak hours occur. So we'll get seven-day, 24-hour count data and define what those peak hours are. And then we look at the IT Trip Generation Manual, they have the rates that are calculated for what they call, there are different periods, but typically peak hour of adjacent street traffic, which is seven to nine, peak hour of adjacent street traffic, which is four to six. And then Saturday would be peak hour of generated, which would be midday. So when we look at the peak hour, we look at the worst-case condition that the site would generate traffic combined with peak of traffic on the, on the main roadway. A lot of questions arise when we, especially with residential projects, when we say, you know, you have 50 homes and only 28 trips. How can that happen? Everybody has two cars. And it's based on the fact that everybody isn't leaving that one hour. You'll have someone that may leave a home at 6:00 in the morning, and some may leave at 10:00 in the morning to go to a retail, work, place of employment. So the manual identifies dozens of studies for each of the land uses, that this would be the peak hour generation for that type of land use. And when it's not available in the manual, I mean, years of experience, we'll typically count a similar alike use and use that as a basis for our estimates.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, could I have one or two more questions, please? In your report, you talk about Rocky Hill Road, and it's described as, the roadway on page 6 of A of your report, roadway is in fair to poor condition as shown in the photograph. And no posted speed limits, no sidewalks, typical, like I said, vegetation growth. In some places, it's missing, there's no lighting at some points on the road. So it's going to, it's going to need some more work if this is going to go in. Is the applicant going to commit to bringing this thing up to, up to speed, so to speak?
Well, there are portions, specifically the section from Harris to the property. The roadway is, is much narrower, it's like 16 feet. They're proposing to put in the sewer line, so the roadway's going to be ripped up, and they're going to widen the road and improve that section of road through the site.
That's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
No. Thank you.
Just a follow-up on that. So all of Paul's recommendations in his report is agreed upon by Al.
Mr. Bannon, I just want to add a couple of questions. On your trip generation, you're basing it on specialty trades.
Correct.
First, what are you trying to find out with trip generations? But would it change some, because Mr. Gisarelli said there's possibilities it could be retail in there. Does it change your report or opinions if it, if it's retail trip generations?
It'll, you'd put in a strip commercial property with, you know, eight retail components. They'll change over time. One could be an Islamic, one could be a Islam, but it's the use that is common. And so businesses change all the time, but the low volumes we're talking about would have no effect. And again, if you do a yoga studio, it's off-peak versus having a contractor there that's there at 7:00 in the morning and then leaving, and then coming back late in the day, which would coincide with the daily peak versus like a midday, you know, studio type or after-work gym. So it would upset.
And what exactly, when you're doing your trip generation in that peak hour, what are you actually trying to find out if there's an issue of, that you don't find it with this analysis? What are you looking for?
If there are capacity constraints that require mitigation, as I did the study for the FGX, we had recommended mitigation because they were putting in the parking lot in the back and expanding, and with the business park across the way, that with that additional traffic at that intersection, we recommended mitigation to include installation of the traffic signal, and that was done, you know, at great expense to FGX.
I know this is DOT, but there's no need for a signal where Harris will be or anything like that. Trips, that's not going to be an issue.
No, because most of the traffic...
Even if you had some retail in that, those spaces.
See, most of the traffic that would utilize Harris to this site would be right out of the side street, which is no issues relative to operations. Typically on main roads, the left turning out, like the, you know, 44 project, it's turning left out of properties, where you have to deal with both directions of travel right out, because all left traffic from that site would use the traffic signal, which is safe and adequate access.
Any other questions of Mr. Bannon? Thank you, Mr. Bannon.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Rocha, I have a question. You made a comment earlier when you made your presentation that you just received the staff report.
Yep.
Is there an intent of the developer to address that, the issues that are raised in the staff report?
Yeah, I was going to go through that after the public comment, unless you want me to talk right now.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking that, the question, you know, have you had sufficient...
I think we've talked, we've talked about some of them.
Have you had sufficient time to review this particular document?
Yes.
Okay.
You guys moved fast at this meeting. We expected to have more, but yes, we're...
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'm going to, if your presentation is complete, I'm going to open up public comment.
We do have the architect here, he has a very nice board, it, with materials came up the last time, so he is available. It's, I'm going to defer to the board.
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
So my name is Matthew Clements. I'm a registered architect with Ed Bojic Architects in Providence, Rhode Island. So I brought this material sample board here. We did review the design standards, and they reference a variety of materials to reflect the character of the town, the traditional character of the town, and traditional roof structures and clearly-defined entrance. So we are proposing to simulate traditional materials with vinyl siding in a variety of textures and exposures. So on the first floor, we have a larger seven-inch exposure on the ground floor. That's the darker color. And then the upper floors has a traditional four-inch exposure. And then the bumpouts have the shingle-style vinyl siding with the gable at the top. The overall roof structure is a traditional hip roof with the gable at the bumpouts. And the main entrance has a awning over it with a standing seam metal roof to distinguish that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, submit a copy of the PowerPoint. So the board has it in the record.
Sure.
We'll have that marked as applicant's number one.
Okay. With that, I'm gonna open up the public hearing on this, and it is seven-fifty-two. If there is anybody interested in talking about this, please come forward, identify yourself, and respond.
I reside in Gloucester One Edge Wood Road, but my business is easy dumper and trailers on Rocky Hill Road. My concerns are, for my business, you know, you're gonna tear up the road, you're gonna make it, you say you're gonna make it wider. The pictures are nice that they have in this, but have any of you guys ever been on Rocky Hill Road to see how wide that road actually is, or Harris Road? It's not heavy vegetation. There's actually trees there on both sides. I drive that road every day to go to work. I come in there with a hundred-and-two-inch-wide trailer to go in and out of there, and it's very tight. You cannot fit two trucks wide on that road. Somebody's gonna pull up and let the other guy by, okay? So I own the last business on Rocky Hill. So when you say you're gonna tear up the road, put in water sewers, am I gonna have access to my facility every day? Are my customers gonna be able to access my facility every day? Or am I gonna lose business because I can't get in or out of my facility?
Can you hold for one second? There's a request that Harris Road-
Do you put the picture up showing the businesses in relation to that? That way we better understand what you're saying.
Location, businesses.
I thought it's the one that you could kinda tell a little closer.
I doubt.
Where is it at?
Like, so Rocky Hill with cul-de-sac, trees.
Yeah.
Access in and out. I did get to the question, yes, we probably have access to the property every day. It's a simple sewer line. One, I go over the road. It's a simple sewer line. It's a couple of days. You can play for a little while. You'll always have access to our property.
Where is your business located?
Right there. The entrance is right there. There's my entrance, right there.
Our entrance is gonna be here, and our sewer line is gonna go down.
So if they, so like I said, my concern is if they're gonna access out of Harris Road, there is, you can't fit two cars wide, let alone two trucks wide, on Harris Road without taking trees down. And if you're gonna widen the road in front of my facility, that asphalted area is not twenty-
Twenty-two foot wide or whatever?
Eighteen feet.
Yeah, eighteen feet, and you're gonna go.
Fourteen feet.
So where is the road coming from? Where are they getting the extra footage to make the road wider?
Yeah, so you're gonna have a forty-foot, fifty-foot right-of-way. Thirty-foot right-of-way. We have a Class 1 survey, so you'll be able to have the twenty-four feet within the thirty-foot right, and not be able to, well, twenty-two feet of road within the thirty-foot of right. So that right-of-way extends thirty feet, and that road will be widened from eighteen to twenty feet. You know, you've got a lot of encroachment here. I wanna look at a survey here. This property line goes in that direction, just like this. This is all encroachment from the property line, but there will be no interruption in business, no loss of sales, because we're putting a simple sewer line in the road for a couple of days. That road will be widened, so we will now be able to have, be able to have two-way traffic. This current cul-de-sac, as you all know, is not up to standards. Sofa fire, apple raps did not safely turn around today. Under a no-bill scenario, that will continue, that road will continue to be too thin. But now, fire developments will have full circumstantial stirrings. So I don't see any detriment to Rocky Hill Road from this property. This development only brings improvements, including the cul-de-sac, including the roadway width, and including sewers by the property.
Thank you, Mr. Cassell.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Goldset? Anyone else? Are there any other people who wanna speak on this subject tonight? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Ms. Rocha?
I'm back. All right. I'm gonna turn the board's attention to beginning at the staff report, page twelve.
Page twelve?
Yes. We start the staff recommendation. The bottom underlined, staff recommends that the master plan application be continued, and asks that we respond, and it lists a bunch of items. So we'll start there and go through conditions of approval. So first is the discrepancy between references to twenty-two units and twenty-five LMI units. This is twenty-two units. I think we've made that clear in the record. Twenty-five percent of the units are deemed affordable. The second point is clarify income targeting. That is in our eligibility for Rhode Island housing. The units are underwritten at eighty percent low-to-moderate-income housing. So that's in the record as well. Provide documentation on integration and parity. Elsewhere in the staff report, it talks about doing that at preliminary plan. This is one building for the units. We've committed to have a mix of unit types inconsistent, which will be consistent with the statute for integration and dispersment of the units. We intend to provide that plan at preliminary. That finding under the new requirements can be deferred to preliminary if so needed, but there is, there's no, we're not sticking them on the first floor and calling it a day. We understand what the statute says, and that finding has to be made by this board, whether it's at master or preliminary plan. It talks about engineering and infrastructure must be advanced beyond the conceptual level.
And where's that at?
Sorry, that is engineering infrastructure. That's on, now I'm on page thirteen. Sorry. I moved fast. Sorry. Must be advanced beyond the conceptual level. This is the conceptual level, is master plan. And under this, there's seven or so submission requirements. We have to come back to you at preliminary plan with full design and feedback from sewer and water. Stormwater design, we'll probably have submitted those items to the state agencies by that point, but that is not, beyond the conceptual level isn't appropriate for master plan unless there's some major issue out there that's been identified, which it has not. This comment, I don't really know what to do with. Housing ratio context, provide a narrative or justification explaining how the affordable market rate ratio advances Smithfield's housing strategy. I don't really know what to do with that. We're providing twenty-five percent low-to-moderate-income housing as required under the statute. I don't, there's no requirement for this narrative. And then we get into conditions of approval. We've talked about a few already. We've talked about the, what's in the traffic report as far as mitigation measures, but these talk about affordable housing, integration and parity. We talked about doing that. We'll provide the location plan at preliminary. There's no real issue in doing that for this project. Number two is also confusing. The phasing of construction, no more than fifty percent of market rate units shall receive certificates of occupancy until a hundred percent of affordable units have received certificates of occupancy. This is one building, so all the units have to be built before we receive a certificate of occupancy. So that's, number two's really a non-issue. The standard in the statute regularly, if you had single-family houses, was one out of four. But we don't really have that here, because you can't get a CO until the building's done. Access and circulation, these two items we highlighted in the PowerPoint tonight. They were raised by both the TRC and at the last planning board meeting. The separate direct vehicular access to the commercial flex building, we showed that tonight. So we are proposing that. All truck traffic associated shall be restricted to ingress and egress via Rocky Hill Road. Same thing. Moving to number four, design compatibility screening. The landscape plan isn't submitted at this stage. We showed you a little bit about what we're thinking. The full landscape plan, the EGO district already has a pretty significant landscape requirements that were well-thought-out. So the plan will address those. I think these two are premature to talk about until we have the landscaping plan in front of you, and it addresses both the underlying district and then anything else we've proposed. I know that, I know there's a lot of requirements in the EGO district because I copied them into the Smithfield Village zoning ordinance amendment that just passed. So I think we can talk about landscaping in pretty good detail once we get to preliminary plan. It's hard to talk about that at this point. Pedestrian connectivity, this one is a pretty burdensome ask. We showed internal sidewalks for internal connections tonight, so that's checked off. The designated pedestrian connection from, towards Harris Ave, Route sixteen, is a, where, you know, the road's being widened. To ask for some type of sidewalk that entire way, I think is a pretty significant ask for this project, and we would be opposed to that condition. So that, we'd also have to weigh, measure that financial cost for the comprehensive permit project. That's it. That's what's, that's our feedback. That's our response to the comments. Quickly. Happy to discuss any and everything within that, and anybody from our team.
I have a general question, just my own curiosity. Who's going to manage this facility?
Not me.
When you say manage-
Who's going to be the person doing the rentals?
Rentals. So the twenty-five percent are actually required to have a state agency. We've, I've already spoken to Molina Lodge, who, she does that. They vet each of the twenty-five percent LMI every year to make sure that they still qualify. They deal with the whole twenty-five percent. And again, we're required to do that as part of the letter of eligibility with the state of Rhode Island. The other seventy-five percent, I mean, I'd like to think that it would be me, but definitely initially, there will be a project, a property management company involved.
So will there be somebody on-site to handle the rentals?
During certain hours of the day, there would definitely be somebody on-site. There is an office right on the first level. We're talking key-card access as well throughout the building, so it's not like people can just walk in and out. But the property management company, they deal with all the electric bills, you know, whatever the dated days are. As far as the property managing of maintenance, that would most likely be myself. I would put somebody there full-time to take care of maintenance and anything that's bigger than what we could handle. We would bring people in for that.
Is there a community room?
There is a community room, yes. On the first floor, right in the back of the building, there's a community room, a community kitchen that they can use if they wanna do some sort of event, birthday party. There's an area where it could be a hair salon, there's an area for a library. We're probably gonna propose to do a mailroom where the Amazon boxes, so if they can be dropped there, and then everybody would have internal mailboxes. That just avoids any more traffic being a problem, because people don't have to stop to pick up their mail. They can do it as they go into their units.
Yes, please. You're showing a cafe there, too.
I own coffee shops. I have to show a cafe.
I thought so.
No, the cafe is probably, that's probably, so, again, we modeled this after the meadows up in North Smithfield, and they call it a cafe, but it really was just an area where they had a countertop, and people would just kinda go and speak as somebody was walking out, somebody was walking in. They'd just kinda stand there. You know, I would propose that that would probably end up being the mailroom, as you walk in and right to the left-hand side there.
So if I have questions about landscaping and site design as it relates to the EGO open space, I guess if we're gonna take a vote on this tonight, there are a couple of things I wanna see changed, if possible, on, going into your preliminary plan.
Any feedback for preliminary plan would be helpful.
So I guess I'll hold off on that for now.
And Mike, I would say that at preliminary, most likely, we're gonna have the landscape architect here as well.
But any guidance you can provide, now is helpful. If it's helpful, I do have the standards. I won't read them exact, but I can give you the general idea. This might be the first one you're deciding under that, so I'm happy to go through them as quickly as possible.
From the board, you have that, the standards are actually listed in that memo that was provided to you.
Actually, I'll go through them. They're in the, those aren't the, those aren't the exact standards.
Attorney Roke, if you go to page seven, Roman numeral seven, forty-five dash fifty-three dash four, D three, triple-I-E one, begins the standards to follow on the comprehensive permit, fifty-three dash four. The planner outlined them there. Consistent with local needs.
Nope. Oh, yeah, they're just not.
Finding number two.
That's not the exact citation, but yeah.
Compliance with the standards of the municipal- Compliance with the standards of the municipal ordinance.
No. Okay, yep.
Standard three actually is located further down on page 11 at the bottom. Integration of the units, which has been addressed ad nauseam that this will all be integrated. So that should be a positive finding. I can't tell you what to find, but it seems pretty clear. Standard four is on page eight, part of finding number three. The development will not result in significant negative impacts on health or safety. Finding five is actually finding five on page nine. The proposed development has adequate permanent physical access, access to a public street. That one seems clear. And number six is actually finding number four, physical constraints. This isn't a subdivision, it's not creating individual lots that would be detrimental. So those are the six standards outlined in the memo.
Yep, so what threw me off, I apologize, is the second standard that's listed, which is not applicable. But anything, Mr., your solicitor pointed out, anything under 4553 seems to be consistent with the new standards, so that's about right. So maybe the second finding, the second citation under each finding one, finding two, and
And as, with any motion, you can put in recommendations of certain things that you want considered or explored or reviewed further. I don't think the EGO district in general needs to be an actual condition of an approval because it's in the EGO district, but Member Moen, I know you have certain recommendations you want to have reviewed or have the applicant be able to show how they considered it or did not consider it.
And the only thing I would add is, with respect to finding one, the staff finding under that relates to the standard that isn't applicable. So I, the focus on finding one under the applicable statute is whether the project is consistent with local needs as identified in the community's affordable housing plan. And if it's inconsistent, there's findings that need to be made.
Yeah, and that's, that was, that's what came up, I think, was being, was an issue regarding, I mean, Mr. Constantino had brought that up, that he, how can it be inconsistent? But as it's outlined, if it is inconsistent for whatever reason, if the applicant has shown that it can satisfactorily address that inconsistency.
Right, but it's just not inconsistency with the comprehensive plan, it's inconsistency with the affordable housing plan, was my point.
Anything else, Mr. Roke?
That's it.
Okay. Pleasure to be aboard.
And there are two adjustments that have to be granted as well. So I can go through those again just quickly. There's the density, which is above the minimum bar in the statute. And then there's the 9% differential on the 6535 in the EGO district. Those are the only two. Usually you see 20, 25, so.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the master plan for the residence at 295. I want to reference for the motion, the findings of fact, 4553-4, down, forward to the end of that. And I know we have some things that Mike's going to add to it, to amend with it, but I just, one comment I'd like to say, and I would say a commitment to work with the neighbors, like you just talked about, and then the business, so have that on the record. Okay. And any other amendments that anyone would like to add to that, comments?
What about the pocket park?
Oh, well, let me, I just remembered, the density, the density bonus to the 86 units, and the change from the residential increase, 9%, and obviously the reduction
Is there a second?
Okay. So I just would like to add to that recommendation to look at the open space requirements of the EGO district, particularly in regards to the illustrations presented to this board this evening of pocket parks. One in particular concerns me is, let's see, where's, where's the North Era? Top right, got it. Okay, so that would be to the northwest portion, it shows one, two, three, four, four parking spaces and the old plant being dropped and a, some kind of residential pocket park going in there. And it's, it's on the, it's on the other side of an access road to the commercial portion. Oh yeah, there we are. Thanks, yeah. That, what that, sorry to drag on, but I recommend that the application, the applicant look at relocating that to the other side of the access road, pulling it in closer to the residential structure for convenience of the residents and safety.
That being a busy, potential busy.
Yeah, because it's going to be their main access point to the commercial section now. So that needs to be pulled back to the residential development. Yeah, it's, I know you're coming in with a landscape plan and all that, so yeah.
That's, Michael, you're proposing that as an amendment to the?
Yeah.
Do you have anything else you want to add to that, or is that it?
Except that the applicant follow all the recommendations for the improvement of Rocky Hill Road.
Yes, so adding Mr. Moen's amendment. I'm good with that, only, only to say, I agree, because I'm the second, I'm the second to your motion.
Yeah, right, the second agrees.
Any other comments? Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mike, opposed?
Vinyl siding. It's a, it's a rustic siding.
Next item on the agenda is the resolutions and ordinances that are before this board to be recommended to the town council. First one is described as a resolution recommending that the town council adopt Smithfield Safe Streets and Roads for All For Safety Action Plan as the town's guiding document for achieving long-term goal of eliminating traffic-related deaths and serious injury. The plan establishes a proactive and data-driven framework for identifying high-injury corridors, improving transportation safety for all users, and positioning the town to pursue federal SS4A implementation grants. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Moen?
Sorry.
That's okay.
I read this from start to finish, and I would have read the appendices if they were attached. This, this document, wow. It, I didn't know how bad it was in this town. And in fact, an interesting aside, when you look at Mr. Banyan's traffic study of the 295 residents we just went through, it discusses the majority of accidents were driver error in daylight in a dry condition. So when I looked at this, yeah, hell, I can recommend this in a heartbeat.
There was a webinar not so long ago, right?
That's right.
About a year ago?
And you participated in it with, I think Catherine, too.
It's a wonder there weren't more accidents.
Yeah, I, this is, this was a hell of an eye-opener.
I think so, too. I have a presentation that was provided by the consultant, if you'd like me to go through it. Relatively high level, but I think it provides some good summary and context.
Yes.
All right. Motion. I'm sorry, you're on first. No worries.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. All right, so again, this is the Smithfield Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan. It builds on a statewide effort led by Ripta and RIDOT to reduce fail and serious injury crashes throughout the state. It gives the town a data-driven, community-informed roadmap for making our streets safer for everybody, regardless of your form of chosen transportation. So the Safe Streets and Roads for All program is a federal initiative through USDOT, focuses on eliminating fatal and serious injuries through what's called a safe system approach. Ripta received a statewide grant in '22 on behalf of 31 municipalities, including Smithfield. The adoption of this plan makes the town eligible to apply for future funding through that program, both for additional planning and for implementation of specific projects identified in the plan. So the plan follows the USDOT framework for safety action plans. It includes eight components from leadership and goal-setting through data analysis, engagement, equity, project selection, to progress tracking and transparency. Each of those elements helps ensure that safety improvements are not a one, are not one-time projects, but part of a continuous process of evaluation and accountability. Between 2019 and 23, there were 3,725 reported crashes in Smithfield. Forty-eight of these resulted in a fatality or serious injury, including 12 fatal crashes. Although crashes involving pedestrians and cyclists account for only 1% of total crashes, they make up nearly 20% of fatal or serious injury crashes. And that confirms that people are walking, that people walking or biking remain disproportionately vulnerable on the roads. I'll also note that this study was done and the data was collected prior to those two accidents on Pleasant View Avenue that resulted in two deaths. That was one of my requests to the consultant to include those as at least a footnote in the document to, to at least acknowledge that, even though it couldn't be a part of, you know, the rest of the report. And so this is a heat map of crashes reported. Because of the way RIDOT holds its data, they weren't able to actually put pins on the map, they just had to show them as heat maps. RIDOT kind of holds those data points close to chest. So again, you know, as the slide shows, locations where a fatal or serious injury crash occurred between 2019 and 23 is on the left, and on the right is locations where someone walking or biking was injured in that same time period.
Are you going to show what those areas are, or? I'm just curious if that's near Greenville Island Smith.
What's the thing in the report?
Yeah, everything is in far more detail in the report itself. This is a pretty high-level PowerPoint. I will definitely be pointing out some, some areas based on what the consultant had given me. So a high-injury network is a tool used to identify the roadways or intersections where the most severe and fatal crashes occur. These corridors account for a disproportionately high number of crashes compared to the rest of the transportation network. By focusing on the HIN, we can prioritize safety improvements in these areas where they will have the greatest impact. And so the consultant gave me some information about their methodology and their process, combined two key analytical approaches that looked at both all modes of transportation and specifically at vulnerable road users. So first they employed a sliding window analysis, which helped them to identify with immediate and acute safety needs that require attention. And second, they conducted a risk-based analysis, which is crucial for filling in any gaps and identifying locations that may have been hidden or latent risks that aren't immediately apparent in the crash data. So that's kind of the difference between where you're definitely seeing crashes and where are the common, where are the roads that share a lot of commonalities with the areas where you've had those crashes? So that way you can get ahead of them, so to speak. And so, and I'm going to get into that a little bit more, too. So when you apply those analyses, you get four distinct types of results. Reactive segments are those showing up on the baseline crash analysis maps based on the top 15% of crash scores. Proactive segments are those appearing in the top risk tiers based on their risk analysis. Some segments do kind of fall into both categories, and they're called reactive and proactive segments as they satisfy both sets of criteria. And finally, there are segments that don't meet either the reactive or proactive thresholds, and those are categorized as none, though they still remain part of the overall network monitoring. And the intention of that methodology is to ensure that they're not just reacting to past accidents, but also working to prevent future ones through proactive identification of high-risk areas. So there was a concerted effort to gain a lot of community and stakeholder input. Engagement included five in-person pop-up events at public locations, along with an online survey that received a little over 20 responses from Smithfield residences. The survey was a statewide survey, which is, you know, why it's kind of proportional in that way. Feedback received in that survey pertaining to Smithfield highlighted many of the same themes that they heard at those events, concerns about speeding, unsafe crossing, and the need for better pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. The main themes that emerged were incomplete or deteriorating sidewalks, excessive speeds and distracted driving, lack of safe pedestrian crossings, and safety concerns near schools and parks. Many comments focused on state roads, especially Putnam Pike, Pleasant View Ave, Douglas Pike, and Old County Road, where the majority of serious crashes did occur. Based on the data and engagement findings, the plan identified 15 project locations for potential safety improvements. These range from smaller local roads to major state routes. These recommendations vary by corridor and include intersection studies, reflective signage, speed management, sidewalk upgrades, crosswalk enhancements, and access management. Many of these projects will require coordination with RIDOT since most of the corridors are under state jurisdiction. Also note that RIDOT did review and approve of this plan, so that is good to hear since their commitment is so necessary. The plan also includes town-wide strategies that don't require large construction projects. Examples include installing reflective markings and signs around curves, improving lighting, reviewing signal timing to better accommodate pedestrians, and incorporating safety priorities into the town's capital improvement planning. There are also policy recommendations to improve coordination between departments and with RIDOT, and to explore school, school-related traffic management improvements. So the leadership commitment that's sought is that the town council is going to be asked to consider adoption of the plan through a resolution. Adoption does not obligate the town to implement every recommendation, but it demonstrates Smithfield's commitment to reducing fatalities and serious injuries, and it allows the town to pursue federal funding through those implementation grants. The resolution- The resolution sets a long-term goal of reducing fatal and serious injury crashes by 50% by 2035 and achieving zero by 2045. The plan includes metrics for project tracking over time, such as roadway miles improved, safety-related studies completed, and upgrades to pedestrian and bicycle facilities. And by adopting the plan, Smithfield is committing to reviewing all of that monitoring periodically to gauge whether or not they're reporting progress towards the goals. So in short, the adoption provides several benefits. It makes Smithfield eligible for that funding, aligns with the town's comprehensive plan, and with Rideout's Strategic Highway Safety Plan and Vision Zero goals. It reflects the town's proactive approach to addressing safety concerns raised by residents. That's it.
So I have a question.
Sure.
If this is officially adopted by the town council, does the data and findings and conclusions of the consultant in here become information that the planning board can reference towards any applications? Is it?
Do you have a, your answer on that? I'm going to defer to.
So that was actually going to be part of my question too, that I was thinking, is how this gets implemented or acclimated in the town-wide sense. I don't know if the council has adopted this as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So I think you can use this as a guide when you are reviewing projects to see if applicants are aware of some of the concerns, if, if there's a project in any area of concern. But I'm not sure it'll fall within your, an element that's consistent with your comprehensive plan.
It just seems like, you know, our town council adopts, they're, to me, they're, if they do adopt it, they're adopting it based on everything that's in here, and they're looking for this plan because of the evidence that's in here. So it just seems like it's, anything in here could be legitimate conversation, any, an application that comes through.
And it will, and what, where you'll have somewhat of a cross, though, as, as Planner was saying, many of these, these road issues are on a, a law or intersect with a state road. So you'll run into the same problem where you'll have to see how DOT wants to coordinate what you think should be done to make it a safer area in that area where development's taking place.
Yeah, I'd say that because Rideout approved of this plan, that kind of bears some teeth.
Yes.
And yeah, because it's a resolution, just to kind of echo what Dave was saying, it's, it is non-binding, kind of going both ways.
But you do have the little DOT teeth behind it, and there are some actual, those facts.
Certainly.
You know, factual numbers and.
Far more detailed than what our comp plan outlines.
Yeah.
For now. And, you know, it was my initial intention to try to find a way to integrate this into the comp plan, but given the time span, it felt more appropriate to bring it forward as a resolution initially, to get approval at all levels, and then work, especially considering we're going to be, hopefully rewriting our comp plan by October 27, that at that point, we can bring some of what we've learned in this plan into the comprehensive plan as well.
All right, excellent.
Mr. Moeen.
Mr. Chairman, John, if you go to page 1-1 and 1-2, it's about a dozen pages in. It's under Leadership Commitment and Goal Setting. The report does reference under 1.2, Related Community Goals, and it does reference Comprehensive Plan Goals C1, C1.3. These are all circulation goals and the circulation element of our comprehensive plan. So they have cited some compatibility with the plan, and I was not afraid to mention it tonight at a previous application. And, and I think, I think we will be able to do that. If it doesn't hold the same weight as a comprehensive plan, it certainly is, comes a document that town has adopted.
Yes.
But that's just my two cents.
Any one else?
Other than that, I think it is excellent idea, it's on plan.
I think so too.
Some of the, some of the projects they, they talk about probably are not feasible, and in fact, they admit that themselves in the document, things like narrowing roads, state roads, and roundabouts, and bicycle lanes on certain stretches of corridors.
Yeah, and some, some roads, just sidewalks, aren't going to work on.
No.
But it certainly puts something behind things happening.
Yeah, yeah, and something needs to happen.
Do we have a motion?
So we are, it's a motion to recommend a, a, okay. Okay. I make a motion on the Smithfield Safe Streets and Roads for All Safety Action Plan, a positive recommendation for adoption by the town council.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
I have the audience here.
Next item on the agenda is the 7.2, a review and recommendation to the town council, zoning ordinance amendment, section 4.4A-4, animal raising non-commercial outdoor. Description is a review and discussion of proposed amendment to the Smithfield Zoning Ordinance, section 4.4A-4. To clarify the relationship between the zoning ordinance and the animal control ordinance, defining enforcement authority of the zoning official, and update the permitting standards for the non-commercial raising of outdoor animals. The amendment aligns with the recommendation from the town solicitor and zoning official and maintains consistency with the Smithfield Comprehensive Plan. Discussion, gentlemen.
Under the Analysis of Draft Standards and Best Practice, Planner is, that's on page 3, under A4, A-4-2, setbacks for hens, 15 feet to propeller, 25. He, he does mention that in some cases, in some communities, it's, front yard siding is restricted. I don't know about you guys, but, and ladies, I don't think there's a lot of R20 zones in this town where you want to see a chicken coop on the front lawn. And they say there's 50-foot setback, and of course, the 30-foot setback is for primary structure, but you can, I mean, I would imagine you could go and ask for a variance at a zoning office, and I don't care how much you screen it, it's just like, you know, that's, that's my principal beef.
That includes all your other worldly perceptions as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you, you, yeah, I, I hear you, Al. I hear you. Yeah, I hear you. But that's maybe for another day.
So was the motivation behind this that we felt it was incomplete, or was there something, an issue with?
Yeah, so Councilman Tapia actually brought it to the department's attention, that a revision was sought to expand on the provisions, open it up a little bit more in some ways to make it more flexible, but to also make very clear and put more standards in place to make it more manageable. And that was the general intention of this. It doesn't really allow for chickens or other fowl, for that matter, in many other scenarios than what are already currently allowed, just where they are. You'll either still be going through a special use permit, or where it's by right now, there are a far more defined set of criteria that they'd be following.
And remember, Moeen, to your point about in R20, when we're going through the minimum setbacks, you can add, so if there is an R20 zone that's going to have chickens, they actually have to apply for a special use permit to the zoning board.
Thank you, I meant to bring.
So, correct, so that's why you, we could state, if you're more concerned about that front yard all over, or just in the smaller zones or under an acre, where you don't want it in the front yard, you can change it from that standpoint.
Yeah, and this was brought up with the building zoning official and zoning enforcement officer as well. We talked through all of this ad nauseam and ran through all the scenarios, and he felt that as long as the special use permit criteria was still there, you know, chickens in general is one of those funny things, it's like, how, how do you regulate and to what extent do you want to regulate? People being able to have food security and raising chickens, and especially because of their size, it's not like a horse or a cow or something like that, but nonetheless, there are still potential nuisances. But through the special use permit, all the butters would be notified because they're applying for that special use permit. So if they want to try to put it in their front yard, they go through that process, all the butters are notified, and then through that hearing, they get to actually hear the feedback of the folks that are going to be most impacted by it. And, you know, we went back and forth on the front yard aspect quite a bit too, and what exactly to put in there, and kind of settled on, you know, allowing some folks, if they go through the correct process to get their special use permit, have it located in the front yard, you'd kind of almost rather it be visible in some instances, so it's there and you can see it, as opposed to folks like just hiding it and not abiding by the It doesn't mean that, through that special use permit process, that screening and other mitigation efforts might not be imposed to dissuade or, you know, to appease resident and neighbor concerns if brought up. It, it's a funny thing. It's a bal, it's a weird balancing act between all of this.
How's everybody else feeling? I'm good with this.
Anyone else want to comment? Do we have a motion?
Yes, a motion with a positive recommendation to the town council for zoning ordinance amendment, section 4.4, point A-4, animal raising non-commercial outdoor, as the description is in our fact finding.
A second?
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
No.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone in the attendance tonight who wants to speak on public comment? One more shot. Anyone else? Public comment is closed. Need a motion to adjourn? Second? Is this yours?
Hold on, hold on.
No.
No, okay.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?